I argued in October and they argued in May time.
I wonder if I can call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order, please? I wonder if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderman Sage. Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Willamway. Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Alderman McDade.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Alderman Fruein.
Here.
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you. We have a quorum. And we move on to the consent agenda and the items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to remove, be removed for special consideration or vote. Seeing, oh, Alderman Fruein?
Mayor, can I read my statement?
Sure. Go ahead.
For the consent agenda, I do not have any personal or business interest in any of the listed items, nor have I received any financial benefits from any of the parties or organizations referenced in these specific agenda items.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Fazini?
Yeah, me too, and I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Alderman Fruein. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call? Oh, we're doing it, I'm sorry. Okay, after the fourth meeting, you'd think I would finally get this. If you'd please vote, and a yes vote, of course, is in favor of the consent agenda. There we go. Okay. I deleted the results. If everybody could just vote again. I give technological impairment a new name. I am terribly sorry. Oh, and that's eight zero, okay. Alderman Willamway is not here. Okay. Moving right along to our regular agenda, item 7A, abatements for debt service for the 2013 tax levy. We have approximately budgeted 10 minutes for this, but I'm going to turn it over to our city manager if he could just briefly clarify this for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. As required each year, the city council needs to abate certain debt service. Otherwise, the county clerk would add it to the property tax levy, which the council approved at the prior meeting. So, the finance director has put together three resolutions, and I don't see any reason why the council couldn't make one motion to adopt all three resolutions, and we would be certainly happy as staff to respond to any questions the council might have on any of the abatements so described in any of those three resolutions.
Okay. I want to go ahead and see if I can entertain a motion before we have questions or discussion to approve all the abatements.
I'll make them.
Okay, so I think I'll say I have a motion by Alderwoman Schmidt and a second by Alderwoman McDade.
And that is to wrap them all into one?
For all three.
Yes. Sorry about that, Jennifer.
This is great. This is wonderful. We're moving right along. Everybody wants to make motions and seconds. This is fantastic. Okay, since we have a motion and a second, discussion or questions regarding the abatement? Seeing none, I will go ahead and not clear the results this time. Oh, I need, there we are, okay. Okay, motion carries eight zero. Thank you very much. Moving along to item 7B, Illinois Safe Roots to School Grant Application for Benjamin School Trail, a pathway connecting The Grove on Kickapoo Creek subdivision and Benjamin Elementary School. And I wonder if we can have a motion to approve and then begin a discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Safe Roots to School proposal.
Move by Alderwoman Schmidt, is there a second? I'll second that. Second by Alderman Fazini. Discussion, questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll, actually, I'll clear those results and now start vote. Okay, motion. Oh, did you mean to vote on that? Okay, okay, good, all right. Motion carries eight zero. Thank you very much. We're moving right along to item 7C, text amendment to Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 7A, Classification Regarding EA and EB Entertainment, ST Stadium, New Classifications and Changes to RA and RB Restaurant Classifications. And if we have a motion and a second, I'll just clarify this a little bit if I can before making any comments.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Okay, move by Alderman Black, is there a second? A second. Alderman Fazini, thank you. And just to clarify, this obviously has been something that Liquor Commission has dealt with. We actually have Liquor Commissioner Jeff Tompkins in the audience with us. This is something we've talked about before. This is presented, some version of this was presented to the council a year or more ago, and there were concerns about it. We began talking about this process in the summer. Frankly, one of the immediate factors in precipitating this was how unclear our ordinance, existing ordinances in terms of a restaurant. We had a particular issue with a downtown restaurant, which has really never been a restaurant, and then most recently had claimed that they were a restaurant because they had $186,000 of video or gaming receipts. So, there was a problem with the definition of restaurants. But of course, you couldn't just go down the path and clarify restaurants because we had situations like the Castle Theater that has a restaurant license that doesn't serve food. So, there seemed to be a severe issue here. We wanted to clean up the ordinance. And my understanding of it, in talking to people downtown and stakeholders and residents and others and legal staff, and again, I want to thank Mr. Boyle, who's in the audience, he was extremely patient and diligent for months and months and months with this. And so, we thought that we didn't want to be intrusive. We wanted to be clear, but we didn't want to be intrusive. We looked at normals ordinances. Normal, for example, for a restaurant specified things like you had to be open between 11 o'clock in the morning and later. And I think in talking to the council, and I want to make sure there was no disconnect, because if there was a disconnect, it's my fault, right? So, I talked to the council and then went back to the liquor commissions, and we worked this through and in legal staff. And we said, okay, we don't want to be that intrusive. If somebody is doing a good job in terms of their business, we want to stay away. We want to stay at 5,000 feet. So, we didn't want to remove things and precise things and conditions like they had in normal. So, that didn't really work for us. So, ultimately, we wound up having a restaurant defined quite clearly as an enterprise where the primary purpose is to serve food, and that if they wanted a license to serve alcohol, that that was incidental to their primary mission. Now, given if we did that, we then also needed to then have some sort of license for places that wanted to serve alcohol, but were clearly not restaurants, and they weren't bars. And so, that's where the entertainment license came. And I realize the, I believe the proposal last time had three different versions of entertainment licenses and lots of differences and nuances. This, I tried to keep it at 5,000 feet. And it was, again, in talking to the bar owners, and we had a public hearing on this and other liquor commissioners and council members, et cetera, what we did, an entertainment license would be, again, someone, like the language, as Mr. Boyle prepared, under the restaurant where the primary purpose is entertainment, and that it was live music. We did have someone who claimed that because they showed big screen football, that they were just like live performances in the Colosseum. I think we respectfully disagreed. So, we wanted to make it clear what we meant by entertainment, and we wanted the threshold to be a little higher. It's actually at 60%, and that was partly because of the public hearing that we had and the meetings that I had with the downtown bar owners who said, well, you know, somebody could just say, I'm going to charge a $10 cover and $1 beers and try to shift their business model over some. And so, we wanted to make it clear that that wasn't going to happen. And of course, we don't have to issue entertainment licenses or any of these licenses, right? So, I want to make that clear. The stadium license, we looked at normals, and it didn't quite fit ours. And George Boyle worked with the people at the Colosseum to basically create a license that fits the Colosseum and its situation. So, those are the two new categories. It's really tightening up the restaurant, what it means to be a restaurant, having an entertainment so that it could be a golf course, it could be bowling alley, it could be potentially a comedy club, the Castle Theater, the BCPA would probably fit that category. And again, the primary purpose is to entertain with live entertainment or things like bowling, golf, rental of equipment. That's 60% or more of your business. Sale of alcohol is to be incidental to that primary purpose. And then the stadium license, what this does not do, and I made it clear in a television interview a little earlier today, this does not change the de facto moratorium on new liquor licenses in our saturation blocks in downtown. So, again, there was a question about that. This doesn't, we're not dealing with that at all. It also does not change any of the fees associated with liquor licenses. We thought that that would be way too ambitious to try to do all of that at one time. We thought we would want to clean up the ordinances, make it clear, if possible, before the end of the year, so that when people applied for their new licenses, they would know what the story was, and that we would have appropriate enforcement mechanisms in place. We're requiring people to submit once a year their receipts so that it shows that they are primarily a restaurant or entertainment venue. If we want to, that is the Liquor Commission so desires, we can, on a quarterly basis, take a more close look at their specific receipts and request them if we've got particular issues or problems. And obviously, we do have some of those in downtown. So, this is part of the attempt to clarify it and to stabilize the situation. I won't count my remarks against our time. So, I wonder who would like to speak to this? Start with Alderwoman Sterns and Alderwoman Schmidt, seeing, since we don't have an enormous number right now, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I believe what we're saying is that this really doesn't impact the downtown liquor scenario. I mean, this has virtually no impact. Is that correct?
I don't think I'd put it that way.
Okay.
I think it's partly because of the problems we've had. We're hoping that cleaning up the liquor licenses will do several things. One is, if an enterprise is not really a restaurant, then they're going to lose their license, right? Now, not going to lose it immediately, but if they are not a restaurant, then they're not going to go forward, right?
Right.
And masquerade, as one, they can't claim video, oh, that's the other thing. This says video poker and any kind of video games does not count toward any of the receipts. It's not food, where, as in a sense, some were claiming, that was non-licker red licenses. So, the hope is actually that it will help the downtown. Will it make dramatic results? Probably not. It may affect a couple of establishments at most.
Right, because I was thinking, do we really have, I mean, I don't think we have any restaurants in the bar section, so to speak, that are, you know, problematic.
The one that we have is Main Street Grill, that we're in, I mean, there's no point in me not saying it. We're in public litigation with them. So, yeah, that's the group that had nearly 70% of receipts coming from liquor that claimed to be a restaurant. That's the group that said because he had $186,000 in video gaming that, you know, that he's a restaurant.
And I remember when they were classified as such, and they never changed that classification, even though they changed ownership.
That's correct.
So, thank you. That answers my question. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Alderwoman Schmidt?
I'm just interested in thinking about how the new licenses are going to be assigned. So, if you're the Castle Theater, they come, like ordinarily, you just roll them over unless there was some problem, I believe, right?
Correct.
Very routine. But in this case, several of them won't be routine. So, do they come in and declare what they think they are, and then you have to hear?
They would have to, they would need to, I think, as we give the license, they would need to demonstrate that they have 60% or more receipts that come from entertainment venues.
You would actually be sort of hearing these or reviewing these in a liquor commission?
We would be reviewing them, absolutely.
Okay, so then that's the reset point.
Correct, yeah.
All right, well, I really appreciate all the work you've put into this. I think it brings a lot of clarity, and I appreciate the time that you all put in to talk to the stakeholders, and, great job.
Thank you. And the credit needs to be mainly on the shoulders of our attorney, Mr. Boyle. He has the patience of Job. He has had to deal with me, and he's had to deal with downtown bar owners. So, you know, George, you're the best. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks. Others? Any other questions, comments? Well, then, I guess we're ready to vote? We're not going to be like normal. Okay, motion carries eight to zero. Okay, thank you very much. And then we'll move right along to Mr. Hales, city manager's support.
Mayor and Alderman, just two quick things. One, I just want to give a special appreciation to our Public Works crews for the first big snowfall event that we had last Friday night and Saturday. I think they did a tremendous job. You've seen in the papers some coverage of all the equipment and the work they did. And yes, we did have a few, you know, follow-up streets to go back to, but I think overall, they just did a tremendous job with that five to six inches of snowfall. So, just our hats off to them, appreciation for them. And I think as the fire chief, police chief, and others just continue to say, for all our citizens and that, boy, as these events come, just need to get motorists to slow down, try to avoid some of the accidents, as we've been seeing, not only here, but in the central Illinois area. Secondly, I just wanted to, I sent out for your attention this morning, a public access counselor determination that makes reference to some trips that the Aldermen, and I even joined this particular group to Peoria back in June of 2012. So, it's kind of an old issue, but there were some concerns raised, but the public access counselor made it very clear that this particular trip and the meetings to observe the Peoria City Council did not violate the Open Meetings Act. So, that was a decision that finally came down after submitting a lot of information well over a year ago. So, you've got a copy of that. Just kind of wanted to make sure all the council was aware. And I have nothing else at this point in time, so I'll turn it back, Mayor, to you.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to call attention to the holiday spectacular at the BCPA this past weekend. The, I didn't have much of a role. I just basically came out at the end in a tux and spoke for about 90 seconds and then bowed with Dan Brady at the very end. But it was really, really, it was truly spectacular. We had people that came out night after night after night to perform about, you know, a show that was produced, written about Bloomington Normal. And on Friday evening, very bad weather, we had robust attendance. Yesterday, it was a packed house. It was really, really just fun. And I also want to call attention to the great event on Saturday that the Chamber of Commerce and the laborers come together to have a Christmas party for, in a sense, needy families. It was really, really heartwarming and great. And I want to give special thanks to Alderwoman Schmidt, who reports over 500 books she had given out. And that's, that's got to be, that's book bike is fantastic. And again, I also want to thank Mr. Boyle again for all his help in rewriting the liquor ordinances. And I want to wish all of my colleagues on the city council, we don't always agree, but we, nobody here is doing it for the money. And we certainly, you know, have made lots of progress, even in just the last week, on all kinds of things. And I wish all of you happy holidays, however you celebrate the season. I wish you the best. And certainly to department heads, residents of Bloomington and the audience, and to all of our employees. Thank you all, and happy holidays and happy new year. That's all I have. And Alderman, start with Alderman Fruein, and we'll go this way.
Mayor, I'm going to pass out a copy of something I passed out a couple of years ago, and I think everybody will find it of interest. And I won't bother to read it, but I think it's a nice little story for the Christmas and end of the year season. So, I'll let you read that. Secondly, this Thursday is the quarterly EDC's Bloomington Normal by the Numbers luncheon, and I've been going to that, and I'm not able to make it this Thursday. So, if there's somebody in the council that wants to fill a paid chair, not to imply that I paid for it, but somebody paid for it, if somebody wants to fill that chair for Thursday, it's 11:30, ISU Alumni Center. So, sorry I missed out on it. It's a very good quarterly meeting, and the keynote address will be Tim Norman about the workforce, local market and economic trends. So, busy time of the year, and hopefully maybe somebody can fit that into their schedule.
If you do, if we could, if you could see us afterwards, because I'm not going to be able to be there. I've got another luncheon. So, we want to make sure that someone's there if possible. Thank you.
Did this letter get around to everybody? I wish I knew who the author was. That's probably been floating around in different circles forever, but I think it's a great story and kind of reminds us of who we are and what we're here for. And so, Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you. Alderman Fazini?
Yeah, that luncheon is one that I go to every quarter, and I will be at this one. So, somebody come join me. It really is good. It gives you a great overview of what's going on in the city, and it's a place where you get some information that you can't get anywhere else. They do a good job of putting it together. So, whoever can, please do. I figured out why Terry was the mayor and I was an alderman, because on Saturday, he was indoors, and I was in Miller Park at the Reese Across America ceremony, and it was cold, and you guys were warm. So, congratulations, you made the right choice.
Hey, that doesn't always happen. You just ask Alderman Sage and I, who are in the Christmas parade, you better come next time then.
Yeah. No, but that's a great event. Our servicemen were there from every branch of the military, and they put Reese out because it was happening all over across the country. And it was, it was quite moving, and I'm glad that we participate and are represented at that each year. So, there you go. Thank you. Anyone else? Alderwoman Sterns?
Just Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Lauer?
I'd just like to reiterate, we need to be mindful and thankful of the folks that provide for us during the period of time that we're actually celebrating Christmas and New Years. And that would entail not only our public service workers if we have a snowfall, but certainly on duty, as always, our fire department and our police officers. Those folks have to be away from their families during that period of time. And I spent a number of years being away from mine. I understand that. And not only them, but we do have, I had a short conversation with a former college mate and fraternity brother who was a little kind of lamenting several years ago that he had spent Christmas Eve and Christmas Day rolling around in the mud in Afghanistan, taking fire. And so, we need to remember those folks as well. Thanks.
Thank you for those words of wisdom, Alderman Lauer. Absolutely. This is definitely the time of season for us to step back and realize all the gifts that we have and not get caught up in the day-to-day minutia and other issues. Thank you again. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned.